Let's go ahead and get started. I've been told that we have too many people in this room, so if you are here to speak on one of these cases, we're going to need you to exit into the hall of the, into the main lobby of City Hall. I think they've brought some chairs out for you, and then we'll bring you in to speak. And then if you could follow along on Facebook on your phones so that you can hear what's going on. Where it's on Facebook and, is it on YouTube as well? Facebook and YouTube. Thank you, and I'm terribly, terribly sorry. Okay, we're going to call to order this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on the agenda is to consider approval of the minutes for May 20th. Brian Leslie had a couple of problems he noted.
There was one point where my name needs to be corrected on the spelling only. And then I believe there was a part where it was showing somebody owed instead of owned.
On page three.
I recommend approval of the minutes with those changes.
Okay, and anyone else have? Anything to note?
I believe it's where it says that.
It's top of page three. Cliff asked if they owed all of the developments, it's Cliff asked if they owned all of the developments. Okay, so Brian made a motion to approve, Meta made a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. We will now hear. Case number SV2020-006. Applicant Michelle Stone is requesting a subdivision waiver from section 155.6.11 sidewalk requirement for Zero Forest Lane parcel R50763 being A0515 Motley William to the city of Stevensville, East Rock County, Texas. Steve.
Yes ma'am, Ms. Stone has submitted her application. She is requesting a waiver to this particular section of the Planning and Zoning Code. The property is currently zoned single-family with future land use, a single-family. She has expressed interest in building a single-family property on this parcel. She is here to not, I believe, to testify. We may also want to talk to her about curb and gutter requirements and see if we need to request an addendum for next month to review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. If anybody is here who would like to speak in favor of this. Ms. Stone, is she out in the, okay. Would you like to have a word?
Well, I'd just like to say.
If you could just come and, I'm sorry. It's just for, so we can make sure we get everything on record. Your name and address, and you have three minutes, go ahead.
Michelle Stone, my address is 825 Preston Lane in Dublin. So, as previously mentioned, my husband and I would like to build a home on the property. And there's no other sidewalks or curbs in that whole area. And so it would be kind of pointless to build a sidewalk on one piece of property. It wouldn't be useful for pedestrians in the area. So that's why we're requesting the waiver. And there's a fire hydrant that would have to be replaced or moved if we did install the sidewalk to meet all the specifications.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Is anybody else wish, here wishing to speak in favor of this? Anybody wishing to speak opposed? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion but the request be denied.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bruce Delater, a second by Todd McAvoy. Discussion.
This property is in the middle of a vast property that is all zoned residential,
single-family residential. There's no residences out there at all. If we start issuing waivers on raw land to not build a sidewalk, then the next person will come along. They don't want to build a sidewalk. The ordinance is that we build sidewalks in residential areas. This being a apparently new residential area, we don't want to establish a precedent in this area.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to, the same thing, this is an undeveloped area and that's why there's no sidewalks. But that's a major thoroughfare and will continue to be so. So it's going to need curbs and sidewalks all the way through, as it will when any additional widening comes through. So that's why I think the thing, if this ever develops in front, which it will, it'd have sidewalks all the way through, and then we're getting to the problem of why didn't the city put sidewalks in? There's too many traffic on Forest Lane, so we'll have that debate. So.
Forest Lane is a very narrow road. There's no, no room for people walking along that road at all.
So I agree with the owner, I understand where it looks like it, but when it all fills in.
Right, right. There was development up until that point, but then from there to northwest loop.
There's nothing.
It's undeveloped. So I'm with you guys that I think eventually it will make sense, but I agree right now it feels ridiculous. But, but we're, our job is to plan for the future.
As you always do, we're just recommending to council.
Yeah.
Council who makes the final decisions.
Right, our, we just, this just goes forth to council, council makes the final decision. So you'll have your chance to plead again to, to council on this issue. Assuming, assuming the vote goes this way, we don't know.
Either way, it's not approved if we say approved, and it's not denied if we say denied.
It's just a recommendation. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of denying the waiver, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Justin, Justin, Bruce, and Cliff? So are we?
Brian.
I'm sorry, sorry Brian. Justin, Brian, and Cliff, yes. And one, two, three, four. So this, this motion is denied, it goes forth to council as we approve denying. But again, council makes the final decision. So thank you very much for your time. Okay, the next item on the agenda is case number PD2020-003. Applicant Steve Emmons is requesting a rezone of property located at 2241 Tarleton, parcel R30330, lot two, block three of the Kaylee subdivision to the city of Stevensville, East Rock County, Texas, from single-family residential district R1 to planned development, PD. Steve.
Yes, we are returning back from the last, the May meeting to review the development plan that Mr. Emmons will be bringing forward tonight. This is for the property that is, as you mentioned earlier, 2241 West Tarleton. This property. We go back one to the open slide there. It's currently single-family and also future zoning is single-family. And then the next slide please. This is an excerpt taken out of the Planning and Zoning Code, which basically speaks of what we should try to accomplish when we look at a planned development. And that's provided in your packet, but I wanted to just bring that to your attention. These are some of the, the issues, there are some of the points that we should look at when we're considering the project to make sure that it complies with the comprehensive plan that we set forth in the city. Next slide please. So as you know, Mr. Emmons presented a conceptual plan in May along with the development schedule. And he's had, he and his team have had preliminary discussions with public work staff in regards to drainage and infrastructure. We have recent submittals including a facade and renderings of a landscape plan. A facade, renderings, and a landscape plan. And we, he's on a very tight schedule, has been since we first spoke with him in April, April 24th, I believe it was. And he's moving along quickly, but with that, we've had some, I guess it puts us in a position where we don't have a lot of time to discuss the development as it's moving forward in the detail that we would probably like. Because of that, we'd like to recommend the commission consider these points. First of all, a traffic impact analysis for the, for the area. We've discussed in previous meetings the, the concern with the traffic on Tarleton Street and what this would bring with the additional units. We'd like to see some additional detail on the screening and fencing. We'd like to see some possible options on the facades and finish materials. The inclusion of amenities to attract the target residents that he is mentioning that he's trying to bring to this property. We would suggest enhancements that would benefit adjacent property owners. And that could be done with landscaping, spacing between this property and those adjacent properties. And we'd recommend a review of the previously submitted development plan with assurances that we can still adhere to that development plan, construction plan at this point in the project. We received letters from residents in that area. We have five that I've provided to you. And those are certainly there for your review. Some of those residents have expressed that they will be here to testify tonight, and we do have speaker cards. Go to the next slide please. These are the maps basically showing the properties, and as you know, there are three properties that are being considered, all for the same development plan that Mr. Emmons will share with you. If we can just roll through those next few maps. And then lastly, at the very end of your PowerPoint presentation is an additional excerpt from the Planning and Zoning Code. It's simply there for your review. It was provided in the staff report, we want to make sure that you have the information that you need. From a staff perspective, we, we were, I think this is an opportunity for the city. It's a tremendous opportunity if we take the time to do it correctly and make sure that this planned development serves the city, the developer, and adjacent neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I am told that we have a, somebody here who wishes to speak not for or against, but a landscape, somebody wants to speak toward the screen, the landscape screening.
He's part of my presentation.
He's part of your presentation, okay. Why don't you go ahead and then we can bring him in at the end.
Sure. Hi, my name is Steve Emmons, thank you for having me back. I'm a Spectre student living. We're based out of Indianapolis, Indiana, we were established in 2007. But collectively, the five primary administrators of our company have well over 50 years of student housing experience. We have projects currently in Indiana, Michigan, Georgia, and Florida, with future projects planned in another part of Florida, North Carolina, Illinois, and hopefully soon here in Stevensville, Texas. Can I have slide number two please? Spectre strives to be a positive member of the community and to be good neighbors. We, we met today with some of the neighbors in the area, we had a nice, well over two-hour meeting. I think we had some great dialogue back and forth and was able to work through and address some of their concerns. Not that we made everybody that we met with happy today, but at least we got to understand what they, their concerns were from the last meeting, and then also being able to sit down across the table and have a nice interaction with those people from the neighborhood. We develop and build high-quality communities, yet affordable housing option to the city of Stevensville. We target young professional, graduate students, married students, and not just traditional undergrad students, although they will be a part of the development. The location of the project, as Steve mentioned, which is slide number three, is on West Tarleton Street and is approximately 8.77 acres. Get a slide number four please. This is the same site plan that we showed last time, we've enhanced it, but we really haven't changed anything at this time. There are a total of 11 buildings, one which is a maintenance garage towards the back of the property. Towards the front of the property, we have four three-story buildings and one two-story building. The four, the three-story buildings are geared more towards the undergraduate population of the development. The two-story, especially in the back, and the one-story building are geared more towards your traditional, the young professionals, married students, and graduate students, as those are all one and two-bedroom. The main entrance will be off of Tarleton Street towards the front. And in listening to the neighbors last time and talking with the city, we're more than happy to make the entrance off of Phelps a emergency vehicle entrance only. I've driven that neighborhood, I do agree with the residents that that part of the neighborhood, it's not conducive for a lot of in-and-out traffic. We have spent a great deal of time and effort to maximize green and open space. As you can see that compared to what was previously presented a few months back, there is a lot less building, a lot less impervious hardscape, and a lot more open green space for the residents to enjoy, but also to buffer us between the adjoining communities, both R1 and R3. We positioned the buildings, especially in the back, towards the center of the property. And we did one and two-story buildings towards the back so that we listened to concerns of the neighbors before, and they said they didn't want buildings overlooking into their backyards, and we totally understand that. And so we purposely pulled as far away as we could to the center. And in the back of the property, I mean, there's a 20-foot setback, then 18 feet of parking, 24-foot lane, another 18 feet of parking, five or six feet of curb and sidewalk, and then another 10 or 15 feet before we get to the first one or two-story building in the back. And in the front, it's 60 feet of setback, 18 feet of parking, 24 feet of drive, another 18 feet of parking, another five or six feet of sidewalk and curb, and then another 15 feet approximately to the buildings before you get to the three-story building. So our three-story buildings, which are positioned not to overlook into the R1 yards, residential yards to the plan north, is well over 100 feet from property line. We, we did purpose an additional 2.2 acres on the front corner of the parcel so that we could spread out, our density is a lot less than it was previously proposed for the R3. The clubhouse will have a leasing office, a business center, a study and meeting, study and meeting rooms, gathering areas, pool with a patio area. If I could have screen number five, can I ask Jason in at this time, or you want to skip the landscaping all the way till the end?
Let's go ahead and do it at the end.
Okay, then I guess we can, we can skip over that for now. If I go back to slide number four? Okay, thank you. Within the R3 zoning, we could ask for up to 210 units would be allowed on the 8.77 acres. We have planned for only 140, actually now it's only 142 units. 20 studios, I'm sorry, it is 148. 20 studios, 31 bedrooms, 52 bedrooms, and 48 four-bedroom units. So over two-thirds of the proposed units would be one and two-bedroom units. And those, again, geared towards young professional, graduate students, married student housing. We did position, again, the four-bedroom units towards the front of the property closest to the existing R3 to the plan south and far away from the single-family residential as possible. We designed the buildings to complement the neighborhood and community, we used quality materials, Anderson windows. I know it was brought up by Steve about the exterior facade of the buildings. They will be primarily James Hardy cement board siding, but there will also be masonry mixed in to that facade. We use Carrier HVAC equipment. No building will exceed 35 feet in height, and that will only be the ones in front. But again, we took the time to do flat roofs instead of, or proposed flat roofs instead of a pitch roof. Our hope was that we keep the sightline from the people to the north so they can still have a nice view and blend into the neighborhood. We'll also put the air conditioning condensers on top of the roof to give a clean look on the outside of the building and offer more amenity green space to the, to the residents. Can I have slide number nine please? The city requirement for multifamily parking is two units per dwelling or 298 units. Our parking lot exceeds that by over 80 spaces. That was done intentionally, although we like to offer as much green space as we can, which I do believe we are offering a great amount of green space. Our goal is also to make sure we had more than adequate parking for the development. We didn't want, if the parking was, was full, that it would leak out or reach out into the neighborhoods and, you know, cause a disruption for the people along both Charlotte and then Phelps and the neighbors to the south. The parking spaces meet the minimum city standards of nine and a half by 18. All fire lanes are met the city standards to 25 feet with the required turning radius. Last time it was brought up specifically about the stormwater management and the concerns in the area. So we've spent a lot of time working with Nick Williams in the engineering department. And we actually had a phone call this week, and maybe I can get some help with Freeze. Freeze and Nichols. And we are working to, with them on a plan that not only takes care of our needs, but also betters the situation and helps solve the problems of, there's one point, there's water that comes in at three points of this property. The one that's probably the biggest issue would be, I'm trying to, can I step forward a little bit? Okay.
It's also right behind you.
I'm sorry, it's right there. In this area, about right here, that pond, the preliminary detention pond has been eliminated, we don't need it. So that will be burned green space, which Jason can talk about when he talks to the landscaping plan. But there is a swale that comes onto our property at that point. There is 43 acres upstream from our property that drains water through. And so, working with the engineers, we are piping from each of those three spots, collecting it, and making it easier flow into our retention pond. Right, did you get that right? Okay. Our retention pond, our retention pond is not designed to hold water. It is just to retain water until it can be distributed at a good rate downstream. So that pond may hold water for two to three days, depending on how big the rain is. But in that time, it will allow our water, which is only 18% of the water that flows through that parcel, to drain at a nice rate and help ease what's downstream. So I think what we're bringing to the table not only serves our needs, but also addresses the, the concerns of the area as a whole on stormwater drainage. as a whole on stormwater drainage. That was something that was important to us to do as coming into the community. When we talked with the neighbors this afternoon, one of the neighbors who actually lives there, we've offered to work with her that she has every right to worry that, you know, it could back up, but we're going to make sure that we can do whatever we can, that, that water flows quickly through her property onto ours, that it's not restricted. We are oversizing the pond to exceed the 100-year stormwater requirement, so we'll have plenty of retainage to help in the area. Utilities are very accessible to the site. Water is available at a couple of different locations. There was a, there was a concern last time that the six-inch sewer line isn't adequate for this development. We've ran the calculations. There's only 75 houses upstream from this development, so the six-inch sewer line is more than adequate to handle. If there does become an issue, there is another option, that there's an eight-inch line that could serve part, a good part of the backside of the building, at least three of the buildings, without adding a lift station. So we prefer to just tap in the one at the six-inch line, and that's seems to be acceptable to Nick. But if there is an issue, we do have the, also the option of looking at the eight-inch line for part of the development. Kind of hard to look here. Our main point of entrance and egress will be on West Tarleton. I know that that is an issue with traffic, and I don't disagree with Steve or the city as in, we need to work together to come up with a solution to make sure that that's impacted as little as possible. We really promote being a green community. We promote, you know, walking, you know, there is going to be a percentage, what percentage exactly of the proposed tenants will be students, but we encourage them to bike to campus, to walk to campus. We also feel that with us marking to just more than the student population, that there's going to be different times or variable times throughout the date that people are going to be coming and going. It's not like if this was just a whole, just totally workhorse force housing, that you'd have a, a great exodus of people at seven, eight o'clock, and then, you know, the same group of people coming back three, four o'clock in the afternoon. I know when I was a student, I liked to get up early. My children, when they had college classes, seemed to all be in the afternoon. So I don't think that you're going to have that just twice a day, three times a day, you know, huge rush out of the development. We, we did say last time, we are willing to work with the city on sidewalks and bath and bike paths along our development towards Harbin Street, and we are still committed to do that. That is something that's very important to us. We are open to leaving the easement that goes through where Phelps is as just in the neighborhood. But if the neighborhood wanted to, or if the city desired us to open some type of path to allow pedestrian traffic and bike traffic through there, we'd be happy to participate in that as well. Slide 10, please. We build and own our communities for the long term. We are stable in our communities even through the pandemic. We have, our communities have been strong, and we have been able to keep active in those communities. We plan to be an active member of the Stevensville Spectre has projects in Michigan, 830 Water Tower, which is slide 11, please. That is our clubhouse building and one of the multifamily, or one of the one- and two-bedroom unit buildings up in, at Ferris State at Big Rapids. That particular project, and I, I'm not going to say this is exact, but it's about 75, 25 student to normal residence or traditional residence at that property. Slide 12 is our project in Indianapolis, and we are doing phase two of that project right now. That project also, again, probably is about 80, 20, but we do get a lot of, we're really close to the medical district in Indianapolis, Riley Hospital and some of the others, which are, is probably as familiar with you guys as they are with us. But we do get a lot of young professionals from the hospitals that live in that community. Our new project that we are finishing up down at University of West Georgia is, is Octave Row, which is slide 13. That's more of a townhouse-type concept that we'll work on down there. Eight buildings. That one is different. The city of Carrollton requires that you have to be a student to live in off-campus housing. I don't know how quite they, they swing that, but we had a signed agreement that everybody that lived there would be a student. And then we have Warner University, which is an on-campus project down in Lake Wells, We self-manage and operate our properties, which is slide 15. We're not using third-party management companies. We feel that is important, that when we come in the community, that we continue to be a part of the community by not handing off the operations to a third-party, party team. Our communities continue to grow even with the pandemic. The community is not scheduled to open until 2021. I know that that was a concern of some of the residents last time, if there was actually a need for this, and especially with everything going on with, with COVID-19. We feel that, you know, we're well over a year away, and the need of the community is continuing to grow. We did a market research, and it showed us that we needed, that the, that the market is calling right now for at least another eight to 900 beds conservatively in this market, and we're only doing a third of that, which we call our absorption rate. So we, we don't feel like we're maximizing or over-serving the market with this development. And that is taking into consideration the edge, which is also coming online in the next year. We've been asked, you know, why did we come to Stevensville, Texas? And I'll be honest with you, the university's the first thing that usually brings us into a community. And the university is growing with the addition of Division One sports and the other programs they're adding. It is a growing university. But the more time we spent here, and the more we got to know the community and saw how it was growing positively, and the other developments, retail developments, and other industry that's coming into the area, that just convinced us more that this was the right place for us to build. If it was just the school growing and the community was not, we probably would not have been interested in Stevensville, Stevensville as, as, as much, because we feel you need both aspects of the community when, when you are dealing with a university as part of the, the draw, that you need both parts of that to make it a successful project. Spectre is excited to become a part of the Stevensville community. Spectre Student Living has invested additional time, effort, and resources into the design and layout of the proposed project to be a positive impact to the neighborhood and to the city of Stevensville. I thank you for your time this evening and happy to answer any questions. And I would like to ask Jason, if you could come in.
Yeah.
Real quick, and go through the landscaping, because as we learned last time, I don't know the native plants to this area very well.
Did I understand you to say that you thought about the possibility of a walking and bike path in the right-of-way where Phelps Street comes out onto Charlotte?
We presented that early on and said we're more than happy to do that. When we talked to the neighbors, we've got kind of mix, mixed back and forth.
I didn't catch, when you said it, I didn't catch the name of the street you were talking about.
I'm sorry.
My name's Jason Lovell. I'm with Lovell, Lonnie Landscape. Mr. Emmons and Spectre Student Living has hired us on to come up with a, basically a living privacy screen for this development. You know, privacy fences, six-foot, eight-foot tall, are going to do a little bit, but we feel like that these plants, trees, and whatnot that we're proposing on this development would do a lot more than, you know, that six, eight-foot privacy fence. So what we've done here is, we've got a berm at the top right, which would help elevate these, these plants and all. And then from there, we're just working to several different types of species, including liveoaks, redoaks, bald cypress, eastern red cedar, Leyland cypress, Nelly R. Stephens, crape myrtles, and vitex. And I haven't added all these up, but I think there's about 150, which that number could change. But what we did was, everything is spaced out at mature, wet, tight, or just under that. For example, eastern red cedars, they can get 15 to 20 foot tall, 15 foot wide. Leyland cypress are the same thing. So instead of just having this fence, because of elevation changes and people looking down and buildings being up, we're trying to create some, some definite height with all this. So we've got pictures of each of the plants. We've got quantities. We should be correct on the quantities. We're a little bit less up towards Tarleton Street, just due to the fact that we're abutting, I guess, R3 on the west side, that older apartment complex. But on the north side, east side, along Charlotte, you know, we're, my, my honest opinion is we've got plenty of plants there to give a privacy that R1 needs.
How tall does a Nelly R. Stephens get? I'm assuming that's what's on this whole eastern row here.
Yes.
In front of parking lots?
Yes. Google it. That's another good thing. You can Google these plants, look at them on your phone. You know, depending on soil type, depending on how well that plant was raised, you know, Nelly R.'s can get 15, 18 foot tall, in my opinion, and then 12, 15 foot wide.
And dense?
Very dense.
You're not getting a, 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 a car headlights not shining through there. More than like, I mean, you'll see a trickle, but it's not.
Correct. The only, the only plants that we've got on this, as far as ornamentals, are the vitex and the crape myrtles that would actually have more of a canopy look to it. Of course, we've got the trees, but we're looking for that height, elevation above, you know, your Nelly R.'s, your Leyland cypress, your eastern red cedar type plants.
But I assume all these will be going in fairly small, so it's going to take some years to fill in, right?
I think it, it will. It'll, it'll take some years to fill in. That part of town is notorious for having a dangerous soil with a clay bottom. Drive that neighborhood and take a look at all those old pine trees that were pretty much devastated in the ice storm a few years ago, and that tells you something right there. I mean, those trees are this big, 50 foot tall, 60 foot tall. Take a look at the trees and plants that are in the neighborhood right now, and, you know, it's, I don't see any, you know, we're not building on a rocky hillside here. So as far as having the opportunity to grow these trees out to full maturity, I feel like that's something we have going for us.
Sure. I'm just saying that it's going to take a while, that it'll be years.
It'll, it'll take some time.
Before we fill in.
We're happy to fill in behind places with fencing, with privacy fencing, to help with that screening. But we didn't want to come in and just say, hey, let's put a fence all the way around the community. I think that that gives it kind of a hard approach. And then when Jason and I were talking through it, so there's some areas that honestly, with the way it rolls and the elevations ha, changes, having the fence really isn't going to be a benefit. And so, I mean, we do have 20 feet along here, and if it takes doing, you know, two rows of different types of trees to get it so we have a nice, solid look, we're, we're happy to do that. We're going to spend the time, the money, and the effort to make sure that we are being respectful to the R1 neighborhoods around us.
You know, but these, these, those same hollies that I was talking about earlier, they're not going to be on a berm, a two-foot berm or something, which would make them even taller?
Along here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to try to berm almost all the property in between. This is going to be a little bit bigger berm.
Right.
Along here, because we have that. But absolutely, where we can berm, we're going to create a lot of, a lot of spoils with the pond for overdigging it, that, you know, we're going to have to, to, to find a place to put.
If you don't need much, a, a headlight is, before you get off the ground.
Yeah.
You know, you're not, the berm would, a two-and-a-half-foot berm would catch most of those lights when you pull in.
Right.
And then you put the plant on top of that.
Any other questions?
No, that was my biggest question.
No, but I have a question for Steve.
Absolutely.
How many people, neighbors, that came to the meeting this afternoon?
I would say there was about 10 to 15. And, and I saw a few of them file in today. So I, I know that we're not going to answer every single one of their concerns, probably to the level that, that, that they would be, you know, voting in favor of this tonight. But I, I think that we are starting to work through them with them and addressing them and, and, and working together to come up with a solution.
A question for Steve, on the presentation. On, I don't know what slide it is, but it's the rendering of the type of buildings.
Yeah.
And under type A, you say that you're going to have, basically, they're the same square footage of type B, but type B is the two-story?
They're all two-story. In the back, we set the club house.
Okay, these are all two-story?
Yeah.
Okay. I got you.
And that, they'll be about 23 foot tall, at the tallest point. We also dropped, we're dropping the elevation in the back of the site to create some additional soils for berming, but also, we did want to put the buildings up at the highest point to be respectful of the, the view out of the windows to the neighbors.
My question's for you two. About how many residents will this accommodate?
342.
Maximum occupancy?
342.
What do you usually run?
Occupancy rates?
Yeah, do you run 80%, 90%?
It depends what property we're at. Right now, in Georgia, we're pre-leased at 98%. Down in Florida, at Warner University, both projects, we have Spencer Hall and Holland Hall that we operate, and own one and operate one. Those are both at 100%. Indianapolis, right now, pre-leased, last year they were 100% occupied. I think they're in the 80s right now, in pre-leased. And then up in Big Rapids, Michigan, I was just there last Friday, I want to say they're 83% pre-leased. And for this time of year, that's about, about average for, in what? We're, we're, we're on target to be in the upper 90s. So our average is upper 90s. The first year at Big Rapids, we did lag a little bit behind, but we ended up hitting our targets. And that's, with the newer communities, sometimes that happens, as kids are just, and residents are a little bit lary until they know for sure it's going to be
Any other questions for Mr. Emmons? Thank you so much.
Can we talk through Steve's six points that he had? Can we address those?
Should we do it now or after?
Please, real quick.
Go, go ahead and.
Can we put those back up? I, I don't disagree with it. It's not an argument, but I, I do think there's things that need to be talked about and things we're going to work with. to be talked about and things we're willing to work with. And so, I think the first one was the impact of traffic.
Yeah, there it is.
There it is. So, you know, we do recognize that by adding additional residential units into the area that is gonna impact traffic, and I, and we are happy to work with the city, whether that is us initiating a traffic impact analysis, which we're happy to do. You know, we've stated time and time again that we'd work on pedestrian trails, or pedestrian walkways, and biking trails to help alleviate that, and open to working with the city on addressing the traffic needs. I'm happy to provide a more detailed on screening and fencing, as we work through the neighborhood, we offer today on different people wanting different things along their property. And so, although I think we've put together a very detailed plan, we are gonna definitely add to it, and there's gonna be areas that are gonna require different types of screening compared to others. The more berming we do, I agree, that the more berming we do, the more helpful it is in, I think the biggest concern is headlight traffic with people turning in and parking. I think we're being pretty specific, I mean, the whole exterior of the building is either James Hardy cement board siding or masonry. I don't have the exact percentage, but I couldn't find in the zoning where there was a requirement that it had to be a certain percentage. If there is, if there's a percentage that we need to meet, masonry versus Hardy, we'd be happy to discuss that. But, I mean, we're not coming in and, you know, doing cheap materials, we're not doing EFS, we're doing, again, cement board siding and masonry. Inclusion of additional amenities, I guess I'd ask exactly what you're referring to.
Well, Mr. Emmons, generally, these discussions will be held before we get to the...
Of this point.
Okay. But as I mentioned, we are moving quickly on this particular project. I think part of what can make this project successful is if we do incorporate some of the innovation that we could, I have in my head perhaps a parklot setting between your property and the adjacent properties, where they could actually be allowed to use those amenities.
Okay.
And these are just thoughts that I've had, that I would've shared with you prior to the meeting, had we communicated. And I believe that that's, again, these are just suggestions that we could, if we move forward with the recommendation to approve, then it would be an opportunity to make sure that the project is successful. As far as the facades?
Uh-huh.
When we go to council, I think we should present more than just one option. Instead of coming in with one set plan, I think it may be more beneficial to the project to have options that the council could consider. And these are, these are just suggestions, it's not that I'm trying to derail the project, create any delay, but if we move forward with the recommendation, I would suggest that we do things that would make the decision for the council a little easier to proceed. Again, I'm...
This is not an argument, I'm just trying to...
...the project.
Yeah.
A view of the, as far as the schedule, with the planned development schedule, the commission reviews the project annually, and if it's not on target, then you can require the developer to have to go back through and submit a whole new schedule. So, this was, again, just a suggestion to make sure that we're successful moving forward, if we choose to do so. I think he's, I'm seeing detail tonight that I haven't seen. I see that they put a lot of work and a lot of thought behind their project. Again, it's because of the compressed schedule that we haven't had the dialogue that we're probably needed to have. So, this is based on what information I had, what you had suggested in the past, and what we heard from the community. And I think it would just be to our advantage, as we move from this step to the next, to see if it's a pleasure of the board, and if it meets some of the desires that Mr. Emmons considers those in the final plan that he presents to council. Thank you.
Absolutely. So, I don't, I don't know, I guess I don't know how to answer some of those questions directly. As, I'll start with the facade materials. I think we're pretty set on the fact of it being Hardy siding and masonry, and when I look at the other multifamily developments in the area, they are primarily Hardy board siding and masonry. If there is something that is desired by the city as an alternative material, we're happy to entertain it, but we've found that for both durability and aesthetics, that that produces a really nice product for the area and for the development. We're more than happy to give a more detail, I think what we gave today was a more detailed screening of the, and I apologize that that was not, we just received the final draft over the weekend, I think I sent it to you yesterday?
I believe it's.
Yeah, I received the final draft on Monday, and then I forwarded it along, so I apologize that that's taken a little bit of time, but we had to get some issues worked out with the drainage before Jason could really sink his teeth into exactly what we'd be able to do on-site. I'm happy to, you know, work with us going forward, we are in tight timeframe to be able to hit our target dates. The July seventh is really pushing it for us, but the development schedule and construction schedule that we submitted to the city is very obtainable. We are going to have just over a twelve-month construction cycle, so I don't see it being an issue of us having to come back as a review and saying, hey, you know, we didn't get built, we didn't build it yet. By the time a one-year period comes, we'll be closing out the project. And the inclusion of additional amenities, that kind of grows with the community, so we do put a fair amount of amenities into the project. One of them that we're talking about doing is, you know, kinda doing a winding walking path through it. I don't wanna sound argumentative, I don't think everybody in the neighborhood wants people going into their backyard and using their common area green space, and I'm not saying that we don't wanna be good neighbors, but I can't say, oh, well, hey, come over and use the pool, if you're not a member of the community. And I don't know if that, I don't think that's what Steve's trying to say. So, we're trying, we wanna be good, we wanna be good neighbors, but I don't know exactly how that part, aspect works. So, I don't know how to quite answer that. So, I don't know if there's any other questions?
Council members, we're good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open a public meeting, a public hearing on this. Before we begin, we've been given a number of letters, and I'm just going to read off the names of the people who wrote these letters, they are all opposed. So, those writing opposed are Sally Lloyd, James and Marty Gresham, Marguerite Stewart, Randall and Patricia Clemmer, Ruth and Gary Brannon, and I think I said Sally Lloyd already. Okay. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Yeah, that would be great. And, let's begin with anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this, and you can send someone in if there is.
There'll be a flood of people coming in.
Any second.
We have none in favor?
None in favor? Okay, so we're going to ask anybody, somebody to speak opposed. And when you come up here, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is James Gresham, I'm the property owner and resident of 409 North Charlotte, which is within the two-hundred-and-fifty feet of, I believe, all three of these developments. So, we met with the representatives of Spectra Student Living today at lunch, and I'm very grateful for having that conversation with them. However, after some concerns and thinking about it, we still remain opposed to the project, and wanna kind of share some of the thoughts on that. While we do feel that a planned development zoning is a better choice than the R3 that you rehashed here in February, we still have some underlying concerns about how this development will play out, and also in the timeframe that we are beginning, that we are seeming to force this development through. First and foremost, the future land use for two of these three properties is currently R1, and they are currently zoned R1. To rezone these properties, planned development fails to follow this plan. Secondly, the addition of an apartment complex sandwiched between a number of residential neighborhoods will further strain the city's infrastructure, burden local roads, traffic, pedestrian crossings, and potentially create stormwater drainage issues. Third, the property size and layout is not an effective use of the property. As an addition to Mimosa Court several years ago demonstrated, the rectangular shape is fully conducive to a single-family residential street. When you look at these properties on the map and the surrounding them in totality, it becomes clear what the primary purpose of this section of property is, and that's R1 single-family. We do understand that on economic level, a developer can make more money on multifamily development, however, the ultimate economic value of the property should not be the driving factor in its zoning. Finally, this rezone is not consistent with the surrounding property on three of its roughly four sides. While this property does border an existing multifamily dwelling to the west, on the northern reaches, it is literally surrounded by single-family homes. Many of these homes, including ours, have been present for over fifty years. The encroachment will represent dynamic and unwelcome change in the neighborhood. For these reasons, we encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to vote in opposition of this. That also being said, we feel like, we do applaud the developer for adding a lot of, addressing a lot of our concerns that we have, however, we saw these concerns today at twelve noon, and have yet to have proper time to really digest them as well. So, we feel like we are hurrying this property along, or this development along, according to a developer timeframe, without the proper context. We are certainly open to having more discussions with the developer, and it was a very good discussion today, however, as the plan that we see and have analyzed today, we still remain opposed to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Ruth Brannon, 560 North Charlotte. My husband and Gary are, were the owners and residents there. We purchased this home twenty years ago in a well-established residential neighborhood. We knew the property behind was zoned R1, expecting that we would eventually have neighbors, a neighborhood behind us. The proposed rezoning would not be consistent with the majority of properties around it and does not follow the plan, the comprehensive plan. Traffic is a big concern, it's very heavy on West Tarleton when public schools and the universities in session. West Tarleton is also a through street between Dell and Harbin, adding a minimum of one-hundred-and-forty-two cars every day definitely would cause a problem. North Charlotte is also a through street between West Frye and West Tarleton, and we already have traffic issues. I think a traffic survey, whatever...
Impact study.
Yeah, that would be good. Noise is gonna be a problem, increased traffic on the city streets through, already?
Oh, no, you're good, you're good.
Increased traffic on the city streets and the apartment complexes is an issue. Car alarms, door slamming, residents talking loudly. Increased lighting from the parking lot, not just the headlights, but the parking lot lights, apartment buildings will be intrusive and not conducive. I think Spectra really did a great job going through their development, I just don't think it's a great place for it to be. I think it's, it would be a nice place to live, it, you know, everything would be nice, but it's just not really conducive to the R1 that is behind our home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Were you at the meeting today?
Pardon?
Were you at the meeting today?
Yes, me.
My name is Dave Keith, my wife, Nikki, and I reside at 843 Mimosa Court, just due north of the property, we are owners and residents of single-family dwelling there. We moved in about five years ago, as that property was being developed, looking at the reality of it being R1 and all the adjacent property being R1. Also a part of a very amicable meeting with Mr. Emmons today, and the reason I knew about Friesen Nichols and about detention-retention ponds is my son is a professional engineer and a certified floodplain manager with Friesen Nichols, so, I'm not his lackey, although I wouldn't mind being his lackey somewhere else. My major concern, I really think, is not specifically against this project, but rather in favor of the philosophy of zoning, and the fact that this property was zoned R1, hopefully with forethought, with intention, and with design. And my idea is, are you really ready to give up on that? I mean, is there an exigency for revenue that would make you say there will never be a developer that will come in here and acquire this property and build nice R1 residence where there are invested, single-family residents being there? And so, I'm concerned, again, with the haste of this, and if the reason is clear as to why is this what we think is the best offer you'll ever get on that property. I will certainly concur that this plan is far superior than that abomination that was recommended earlier in the application for the rezoning to R3, but simply being better-looking does not always make it the best thing. So, really it's more on philosophy of zoning and future use that I would like to submit to you. Please think about this very carefully, and think about, are you really ready to give up on that property and its future as single-family residential property? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please state name and address, and you have three minutes.
Sally Lloyd, I live at 2380 West Mimosa. I'm sorry, I'm gonna read off my phone, I made some notes.
Yeah.
I agree with the others who have spoken about how it's in the plan for R1, and this doesn't fit in that. Tying that with the traffic portion of it, if, given the units that Mr. Emmons has said are gonna be in there, if the single, one-bedroom and studios are occupied by just one person, that is still three-hundred-and-forty-two residents, who, majority of them are gonna be driving age and have cars. There was discussion at lunch today, at the lunch meeting that we had, about if it was single-family homes, it could fit, I believe you said, sixty to seventy, single-family units? If you put four people in there and all of them drive, that's only two-hundred-and-eighty. And a three-bedroom house isn't gonna, more than likely, is not gonna have four drivers in it. So, I think that, given those two things, single-family residence is a better use of the property, because it would cut down on the traffic. I am very concerned about the traffic coming out on Tarleton Street, because of the addition of this complex, plus the one that is still under construction on the other side of Tarleton Street. Sorry, I can't get facial recognition to work with my mask on, so I'm having trouble with my phone here, hold on. Well, now I can't get anything to work. I did have one question, I believe you said that, in tonight, you said that y'all have been in business since two thousand and seven, is it two thousand and seven? Two thousand and seventeen. So, I wanted to clarify that, because I'm sure you have a great company, but there's not a huge track record to go by on stability of the company, and especially when the company is far removed from the community. I think that's important to note. I think that's important to note. I'm so sorry that I'm having to do this. Okay, there it went. And I will also echo the concerns about just the timing. Is there really need to fast-track this? I know from a financial standpoint, from investors, of course, there is. But as a community, do we really want to fast-track something that is not in, within the plan that has already been set forth for that space? Or do we want to take the time to consider it? So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Patty Clemmer, I live at 540 Charlotte. I just want to reiterate what my neighbors have said already, but specifically in regards to traffic. If you ever drive down Charlotte Street, there are cars parked on both sides all day long, every day. And navigating it right now is pretty tricky. You have to wait for the other person to come, or they have to wait for you. So, adding vehicles into that is just going to make it worse. Also, on Tarleton Street, we've talked about, you know, the addition of 300 more cars, you know, coming out onto that street. But some things that haven't been brought up. There's already traffic there with, with that, there's that, those back entrances into University Plaza. I know that's how I go to HEB, is to cut through there. And I know I've seen a lot of people do that, so there's already that traffic. Plus, you've got Interbanks Drive-Thru that comes out onto Tarleton Street. Imagine if you've got several cars trying to get out onto Harbin Street. And at certain times of the day, you know what a nightmare that can be. And those cars are going to back up down Tarleton Street. So, if someone turns off of Harbin wanting to go into the bank, they're stuck waiting. So, where do all those cars go while they're waiting to get into the bank? I think that would be a serious traffic concern. Also, in addition to the traffic, you know, we've mentioned the noise issue, the light issue, and I know that Mr. Emmons has talked about the lighting issue and that the lights would all be designed to point down, but there's still light there. Any parking lot that you go to in town, the lights are pointing down to the parking lot, but there's still light, which with that many lights in place is going to light up, you know, our yards more than they are right now. I mean, we get spill over from Tarleton onto our street. So, you know, if it's right in our backyard, of course, we're going to get that. So, I guess, you know, that's really all I have to say. I just, you know, hope that you'll really consider this. And again, the issue of time is a concern as well. You know, fast-tracking this is not maybe the best, the best option. And again, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Emmons again for taking the time to listen to us. And he did listen to us last time and put some changes in place, and we truly do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Marguerite Stewart, I live at 878 Mimosa Court. Basically going to cover the same concerns that I've covered the last two times I've been up here. The traffic situation, I think a study is probably a good idea because, but with the given situation now, I don't know how accurate it would be. But it is definitely a concern that there's going to be that many more cars coming in and out on Tarleton Street. The concerns of invasion of privacy and safety and all that that I voiced last time about having an apartment complex overlooking your neighborhood, it'll also disrupt the neighborhood atmosphere, and I'm also concerned about the property values. You know, we made our purchases on the homes that we have all purchased in that area. A couple of other people have mentioned it based on the fact that we knew that that property, the future use of that property was going to be R1. And we feel that that's probably, would have a better impact on our property values than having an R3 or multifamily apartment building there. And also, there's something, I didn't have this in my letter, but just the uncertainty of, of the future of the way Tarleton is going to go now. You know, does anyone, I haven't heard anybody address, like, if they know what enrollment is going to look like and what classrooms versus online and all that kind of stuff in the future because of the pandemic. And so, that concerns me that this property will get stuck in there in 12 months, and then the enrollment at Tarleton's not going to be there, the need for the housing's not going to be there. Then what's this company going to do with this property? They're going to try to get out from under it, and then who knows what's going to happen? They don't have the same philosophies that this other, you know, company advertises that they have. So, that, that concerns me, the, the far future of that. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please state name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Charlie Atkinson. I hate this mask.
We all do. We all do.
I live at 580 Charlotte. I'm going to talk a little bit about the personal. Everybody else is talking about the traffic, and we all agree with that. I moved to Stevensville in 1998. The reason I brought my home at 580 Charlotte was because of the open lots behind my house. It is the only home I have ever owned. I am 85 years old. I've sat on my patio and watched the birds, the squirrels, the airplanes, even an owl in one of the trees that they once chopped down. I've seen the most beautiful sunsets you've ever seen. If you let they build, build those apartments, first it will be the dirt, the dust, the loud machinery. Then the hammers, the saws, the foul language that comes with building. I know, I watched them build that by the big lot. After they are built, it will be the noise, the trash, and according to the diagram that I saw, I will be looking into the back of a three-story apartment or a parking lot. I love diesel pickups in the morning. Would you want to sit on my patio and see what I will be looking at and putting up with? I don't think so, but you would be welcome to enjoy the scenery. I think they are trying to wear us down so that we will say, okay, build them. No, never. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Steve Gunn, I live at 125 Linda Lane. And my property borders the development proposed here by Mr. Emmons. First of all, he's had a lot of rocks on, I want to commend him. Very nice project, it's, it's great. I think he's done a great job with it. The only bad thing about it is just in the wrong place. And we're just kind of locked in there, and I just kind of look at our staff report. Always look at 8J there, it always talks about impaired property values in the immediate vicinity. And then, how much property? And then I go back here on the last page, and it shows 57 single-family homes in that buffer zone of 200 feet. That's a lot of people that surround this project. I think everything's been discussed on traffic. Traffic, of course, is not only this complex. Mr. Emmons stated he's going to limit that, and it wouldn't be at the same time they're living. We've also got three on Tarleton Street. There's three other complexes with Tarleton students. So, it's not just how we can, how we can control the traffic coming out of this project. We've got three other projects, and it's all Tarleton-bound. And sure, there's going to be eight or nine hours of traffic, but there's going to be most of it is going in just a few of those hours. Anyway, also, it was mentioned that we've got so much traffic going there already. We've got three other complexes, we've got the bank, we've got the strip shopping center. A lot of things going on in that shopping center. And I guess, as for, I think you, we were talking about the, he stated in here the water sewer, six-inch sewer line that he's talking about that only cook a couple of residents, that joins into Linda Lane. I live on Linda Lane. That sewer where it comes across, it joins into that sewer line. Now, I'm sure that can be, you know, that can be fixed, that can be fixed. But it's still in here that that's going to serve the purpose, and it's not. Because we're having trouble today with that sewer on Linda Lane. Anyway, so I guess, I was, that's about all I have to say. I think everything else has been stated. I'm glad Mr. Emmons came, I'm glad they chose Stevensville for a development, and I hope he continues to look other places in Stevensville for what he's trying to do. Because I think his intent is great, I think his, the planning he's got and, you know, the input he has has been really positive. But again, wrong place.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Joshua Wallace, I live at 835 Mimosa Court. I also attended the lunch meeting earlier today, and I want to thank Mr. Emmons. He, I appreciate that he is trying to address the concerns of the residents, and I, I do appreciate that. But aside, regardless of that, I still am concerned about being adjacent to this property. My wife and I, we purchased this home in 2016, and we knew there was a vacant lot adjacent to us. I didn't expect it would stay a vacant lot. You know, we, we looked on the city's website to see what it was zoned and all that, and we saw that it was R1. And so, we went in, we made this purchasing decision with that information in mind, and had it been zoned anything else, we may not have purchased that home. And I, and I feel that, you know, it's just kind of, to sort of change the, the dynamics, the zoning of the area after I've made my purchase decision. It's just kind of a, a little bit disconcerting to me, but anyway. In addition to that, you know, we're concerned about the potential of our resale value of our home. Also concerned about the increased noise and traffic. I know several of the others have already spoke to this, but even right now, especially when classes are in session and, you know, the normal life of the town is happening, Washington and Harbin, the intersection there is extremely busy with traffic. Harbin and Frye is extremely busy, especially certain times of the day. There's also a lot of people who basically jaywalk or run across that street throughout the day. When I've driven up and down Harbin, I often see, I assume they're college students who are running across Harbin to, you know, to try to dodge the traffic. And part of the reason they do that is because there's not a lot of good places to cross there. And I think that if we have this development, we're going to have even more, not only car traffic, but pedestrian traffic. And it's going to be dangerous there, especially if there's not the infrastructure in place to make it easier for people to cross that street as a pedestrian or, or whatever. And so, those are my main concerns, and thank you for letting us have a chance to speak.
Thank you very much. It might be off. That's it? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, if I can get a motion, then we can discuss. Motion one way or the other. Somebody go on record.
Somebody just have a motion so we can talk, right?
Right, we need a motion in a second so we can discuss this.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve.
Okay, Meta makes the, the motion that we approve the rezone. Bruce Delator, seconds. Discussion. Well, I, I think, Ms., oh, sorry, go ahead, Bruce.
We had this discussion back in February, the last meeting that I attended. Apparently, y'all had it last month as well. I wasn't here, I didn't even know that the meeting was being held. So, news to me. Anyhow, it seems to me that, based on Mr. Emmons' presentation, that most of the issues regarding what was raised back in February have been addressed. There's always a question of more traffic. Whenever, whenever more residents is spring up, there's always more traffic. Nobody wants to wait in traffic, but it's just a fact of life. I, I think that mo, most of the issues have, have been addressed satisfactorily. And so, that's why I'm in favor of approving the changes.
Todd?
All right, I'll just get this out. I have major concerns, but one of the biggest concerns I have is, is with anything. People live in a city, and I've said it a thousand times, they live in a city, they buy property based off zoning. If not, they want, they'll live in the county. And so, when you arbitrarily train, change a zoning request based off of an economic impact, that's a choice that a business is making, and it's capitalism. What's happening here is the landowner might or might not be asking a certain amount of value for the property, which had, makes deemed necessary to only have R3 on that property to make it economically feasible. This is a whole law of, of economics. If, if the, if the landowner wants to sell at a certain rate, he'll sell at a certain rate. And so, what happens is, you're, we're making a decision here because we say, well, we have to have that in order to make it feasible. Well, that's, that's company. But the landowners who are lined up all on this side, irrelevant to whether it should be an open lot, that's not the argument. The argument is a zoning argument. That's what keeps a shell or an all subs or anything else coming next to your house, is the zoning. And it's the responsibility of us to protect that. Somebody really wants to talk to me. And it's our responsibility to, to protect that zone. Now, I agree that there's been great concepts here, and I'm still willing to work it out. However, if you just go by some simple things of what a owner requests should meet on a planned development in our own packet, four of the seven aren't being met. But, so we're, we're looking at that going, well, that's okay. For instance, we're supposed to have a lighting plan in here. There's no lighting plan in here. And it's not our job to come up with all these questions and say that. It's our job to present them as, as the, not that it hasn't good work, but part of this is a rush project, things get missed. And when rush projects, if, if council approves this, there's no lighting plan on here for them to approve. If we don't catch that, we'll say, okay, we have to catch lighting plan. Okay, then there's going to have all these things, and then the power goes to the developer to say, well, you didn't ask for a lighting plan, so I don't need a lighting plan. I can put whatever I want in here. And that's technically his right, because we didn't do our due diligence. I don't think the packet's prepared, number one, for what we need to advance on in such short notice. Again, the short notice, I understand, he's on a contract constraint, not our issue, his issue. I appreciate the plan, I appreciate what he's proposed, I appreciate what he did, I agree with all of it. But again, it goes down to a zoning request in the end, and there's other factors. But if you go by our own rules, which are on page 33 of 80 of our deal, what a planned development is, four of the seven aren't there. So, I disagree that we should be approving this, recommend approval of the council. But again, it's going to be council's decision, so I'll be voting no.
I'm with Todd, I'm, I'm going to vote no as well, and for the same reasons. I'm, I, I don't like that all of these people bought their houses with the knowledge that it was R1 behind them, and then we're, you know, taking it out from under them. I don't like that, I don't like what that does to their property values. And I don't see a way to resolve the traffic issue. I just, I don't see, I, I would love to see a traffic impact analysis if this does go forward. I don't know how that's going to be properly done right now in the middle of this pandemic when no traffic patterns are normal. But I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the traffic, the density, and, and taking away all that R1, when our city needs more affordable R1 housing. That's where I'm at.
We had turned this down before.
Yeah.
I mean, great presentation.
Really good.
I'm blown away with, you did a fantastic job there. It's not that. But the purpose that we turned it down before, it is an R1. It's residential for families, and that's why we turned it down the first time. This would be a great addition to the city, but not here, I feel like. If there was another property location, I think that would benefit you more. But traffic is my biggest concern, plus the, the infrastructure. I don't know if it's going to be what it needs to be, and then the time- to be what it needs to be, and then the time constraints that you have, I don't think that we can do enough studies to end time for your deadlines. And so I'm going to be an O too.
Anybody else wish to speak, or should we go straight to a vote?
You brought up the parking, or the traffic. That is 340 full capacity, that's why I asked the question, the capacity. That's 730 ingresses and egresses, despite what time of day. That's three times the amount of a residential development that would hold 20 houses in that development, and that, I can't imagine 730. I don't even like going down Tarleton now. Now, I know we're going to have traffic, but 730 egresses and ingresses? That's high numbers.
And if you consider that you've got the commercial property between Tarleton and Washington, if a major developer was to buy that entire area, was to say that they won't bulldoze the entire area and redevelop it into something else where there's not that egress through the parking lots like there is now.
And again, that's not his issue, the street. But that's what the street is designed, it's a collector's street. It's not an arterial street, which is what Wolf Nursery Road is up here on where the big ones are built. I mean, it's a different street. Like you said, wrong, good plan, wrong place. So, that's me. I'm done. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add?
I may have something else. I was born and raised in a town almost exactly the same size as Stevensville, and I lived as a young boy two blocks from college. And my boyhood home is now a parking lot of that college. And I would expect that Tarleton is probably going to expand across Harbin, and I would consider it extremely likely that all of the single-family housing south of Frye is going to disappear over the next 15, 20 years, based on the proximity to the university.
And there again, we have the same issue we had with Lillian Street when Tarleton took over the other side of it. Enough accidents occurred with students and pedestrians before they asked for a shutdown of that street. Harbin is not a street we need to shut down if Tarleton was to do that.
No, they're fixing to widen. Don't they have the plans to widen Harbin?
They do, but still.
Tarleton is currently buying all those houses as they come up for sale that face Tarleton, that are one.
And so if they ever jumped across, and enough people get injured or whatever, they may come to the city with a different council and different board and everything else, and be able to shut down Harbin, so.
Well, this is speculation that's not really on target, so let's stay on topic. Are we ready to vote? All right. All those in favor of approving the rezone from R1 to planned development, say aye.
Aye.
So we've got two. We've got Meta and we've got Bruce in favor. All those opposed? Nay. So, for the record, nay is Lisa, Todd, Brian, Justin Uurnay, and Cliff. Okay, so this does not move forward. Or this does, we do not send it with a recommendation to approve. It will still go to council, and we will vote on the rest of these votes.
Thirty seconds.
Go ahead.
So I'm continuing to listen to your concerns, and I don't disagree with them. I'm going to work with Steve to try to come back next week, make another meeting with the residents, continue to address those concerns, continue to work with the city on traffic. I would love to be down here a lot more. With the pandemic, it's made it a little bit tough to do everything we'd like to do. I want to apologize about the lighting plan, that I missed, but we will have it next week. That we did miss, and that won't happen again. But we do want to be, if we do make it through the council, I promise you we're going to be great members of this community, and we're going to work with the neighbors continually. So we'll be back down next week, and we'll set up another meeting with the residents, we'll continue to work with the city, and, you know, hopefully, if, I know that some of you guys, and I understand the decision you made tonight, are not in favor of this, but if we do happen to go through, I'm just giving you my word that Specter will be a great member of the community and proud to be here, to be part of the neighbors.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
And I can give a recommendation that might help you, or at least help them for my vote, and I can't say, but just for myself. And I know you have economics, but if these two-story buildings back here, namely Building One and Building, whatever you can do to chop down a couple and build up, because you already have R3 up here. That's boarding R3. If you can find a way to get, because the deeper you go back, the more you're surrounded by R1s. That's going to be your biggest struggle. So my recommendation, will you get those cut down to regular single-town homes like you showed us earlier? Your residents might be more apt to have a conversation with you.
This is exactly the point I think.
I'm just saying. I'm not speaking for them.
No, no, I'm just saying it's just.
But I would like to see development in Stevensville as well, but.
Yeah, we all think you did a terrific job.
I just want to tell you that we'll continue to work, and, you know, hopefully, if things work out, we'll be some of your pride and help in your community.
Thank you very much. Now, we've just, we've got to do some, we've just got to work our way through the rest of the agenda and formally go through each piece.
Do we need to make a recommendation on this action?
No, we already voted on the one.
Just to fail that motion, right?
Well, that, it goes forth to council with a, we recommend they do not approve. So that's where it stands. But we've got to go through the rest of the cases just for the sake of paperwork. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is case number PD 2020-004. Applicant Steve Emmons is requesting a rezone of property located at Zero Tarleton, parcel R 73194, Lot 1, Block 3 of the Kaylee subdivision to the city of Stevensville, Eareth County, Texas, from single resident district R1 to planned development PD. Steve, I assume you have nothing new to add, or?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here. Nothing new to add, and even for the next case, the only variation there would be that that property is currently zoned multifamily, but future zoning would be single family. So this particular case, 004, is single family currently, future zoning is single family. 005 is currently multifamily with future zoning as single family. Otherwise, everything.
Future zoning, gotcha, okay. Okay, I assume we don't need to do another presentation. We've all got it.
You can just go on and hear me talk again.
I think we're good. I think we're good. We're going to open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak opposed? We're good? All right, closing the public hearing. Commissioners, may I have a motion?
I recommend that we deny, or recommend to council to deny case, I think we're 202004?
Yes.
Not approve, I guess that's the word, not deny, not approve.
Not approve the rezon. So that's Todd McAvoy making the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got Brad Leslie making a second. All those in favor of the denial, say aye. So we've got Todd, Justin, Cliff, Brian, Lisa in favor, and you two are sticking. So all those opposed?
Nay.
Meta and Bruce opposed. Okay, so that moves forward to council with a recommend that they not approve this rezon. And the final item on the agenda is case number PD 2020-005. Applicant Steve Emmons is requesting a rezon of property located at Zero Tarleton, parcel R 30333, Block 139, Lot 8E, on the city addition to the city of Stevensville, Eareth County, Texas, from multiple-family R3 to planned development PD. Steve, nothing to add, I assume? Nothing to add, Mr. Emmons? We will open a public hearing. All those who wish to speak in favor? All those opposed? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners.
Your turn, Justin.
Come on, Justin, we haven't heard you today.
I generally don't speak too much.
He's a strong silent type.
Something like that.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council that we deny this application.
All right.
For PD 2020005.
And the second?
Second.
Second. So Brian Leslie makes the motion, Todd McAvoy makes the second. All those in favor of denying the rezon, say aye.
Aye.
Same group, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. This has been a long one, guys. Thank you for hanging in.
I made a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.